All right. We are restarting right now. Apologies we're so late. Intense things going on. Is anyone here to make a public comment? No? Okay, great. Our next agenda item is Eagle Scout project. Please feel free to come up, Mr. McFarlane. Want to use that?
Hello. My name is Louis. My name is Louis McFarlane. I'm part of troop 28 and I'm looking to present to you the creation of seating areas at Gold Star Mother's Memorial. Recently, there's a dedication at the Gold Star Mother Memorial. I believe that the memorial deserves to have a place that to provide an opportunity where people can spend time and reflect. Our proposal is to enhance the area by adding a small area brick paving, relocating the existing benches, implant two cherry trees, but to hope that people who come here have a place to reflect on memorial. I've already met with Conservation Commission about this. The map on the left here shows the conservation buffers and the pink shows where the benches exist right now. On the right is the pre-plotted land for graves, so I'll be working in the area between the left and the right, not on the pathway. Here's the photos of the current situation. On the left is the current bench locations spread out from each other and not really near anything. And on the right is the area for the relocation on either side of the walkway. Here's my proposed design. In the blue is the current walkway and on either side is a bench area. The red is symbolizing the bricks that I will put down in a roughly seven by or twelve by four foot area. On the right is a soil area with a cherry tree on each side. My material costs, the benches are free because they already are there and the bricks in the drainage system, I'll have the bricks donated from a group right now. The gravel, sand, filter fabric, pea moss, compost and concrete will be used for the drainage and also to surround the tree for good soil. So it is able to thrive there for longer. Trees combined will cost around a hundred bucks and the total is around three hundred twenty-eight bucks. My timeline for this is after confirmation from the Scouts organization, I hope to start this project as soon as possible. It's will most likely be in the beginning of June, maybe going into July if necessary. My fundraising goal is for $400. This is to account for any tools I need or unforeseen costs that I do not account for in this presentation. I plan to make this money through door-to-door donations and also car wash if necessary. Thank you for listening. Any questions?
Well, thank you very much for the presentation. Are there any questions that the board has?
It's a fantastic idea. What kind of trees you gonna put up?
Cherry trees.
Cherry trees, beautiful.
I'll give you my address. You might find it fruitful.
All right. Well, thank you. Would the board like to make a motion to approve the relocation of the two benches at the Gold Star Memorial?
Second.
All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thanks very much.
Please keep track of your progress.
Twenty-three. That's one hundred.
Okay, thank you. The next agenda item is the public way process with respect to Bates Lane. So Mr. Redden?
Good evening, board. Vice Chair, Mr. Senior, members of the board. My name is Tim Redden. I live at 20 Bates Lane here in Cohasset and I have since 1997. My wife Debbie is over there. She's here tonight. And Dan and Beth Tapi are also here. You probably familiar with them. What we are proposing tonight, and I have a street acceptance petition from 10 out of about 12 residents, two were away. They said we could sign their names, but I didn't think that would be a good idea. So I just left that off. This is our first time before the board. We've done a little research as far as the public ways in town. Oh, by the way, how long do I have?
Um, why don't if we feel that, you know, we're running over, I'll let you know.
So we've done some research. When we first moved in in 97, Bates Lane was a very, how should I say, good condition. There's 12 houses on there. It's cul-de-sac. There's twelve houses on there. It's a cul-de-sac. It would meet inspection. It's wide enough for two cars. Cul-de-sac itself has four town, uh, four houses on it, but it's in bad condition. We didn't know at the time that it was not accepted as a public way. In fact, I didn't know it until probably two thousand and ten, when I walked into the DVW office and the administrative assistant, the Mary Snow, when I introduced myself, she said, oh, Bates Lane? I don't think we ever accepted that. So it just went over my head at the time because the street was in pretty good condition. But as the years have gone by, it's deteriorated. So the research that we, mostly by my wife, we have a current Cohasset street, a update. This was current back in two thousand sixteen, November two thousand sixteen. So we've gone over this and if our numbers are correct, there's a hundred and sixty-five, sorry, a hundred and sixty-five roads in the town. And seventy-two of those are marked public and ninety-three are marked private. And we have no association. We don't get, we don't have any HOAs in on Bates Lane. So the surprise to us that the road is plowed and sanded by the town. But it's never been paved since the last house put in was ninety-six. That was us. We moved in in ninety-seven. All the other eleven houses were completed by, I believe it was eighty-five. So it's been close to forty years. So that part was surprising. The other part, when we went over the sheet, a lot of the roads in the area, probably within a half mile radius, Aaron River Road, it's not public. Obviously Bates Lane, Carbone Lane, it's not public. Flintlock, Ridge Road, that's not public. Hillside Drive, just right off, Beechwood, that's not public. And River View Drive. Now that's just six out of what we believe to be ninety-three roads of town. Now I know not all ninety-three are would be accepted or should be public ways. Some of them may not meet the inspection. Some like Will Wright Farm probably have an HOA because it's a condo development. So even if you take twenty, thirty off that list, you're still talking over fifty streets that will never be, if they're not made public, as you know, they're not going to be on the new paving list. So which we, obviously we voted for at the last town meeting, hoping that we could get on there, not knowing that you have to be public and accepted by the town before you can get on that list. And we realize that even if we're accepted, that that list doesn't have a lot of funds to it. So it's going to be five, ten, fifteen years before we actually get paved. But if we don't get on that list, then we'll never get paved. So and I know we need a new town hall. I know we need a new junior and senior high school. But this came to a surprise. This came as a real surprise that we thought we were the only ones. And at this list, this is two thousand sixteen. Now I don't think this was, has been updated since, but I believe Cedar Acres went through a process where they had this done. That might be something that the board will want to look into. Obviously, at a million dollars a mile, these roads are going to be very expensive. So if you don't have the upfront money, it might behoove you to just simply take a petition like that's the Bates Lane, accept it, and then maybe we can come to some type of agreement where maybe the town would pay half and the other half we would pay and it would just be taken out of our taxes for the next ten years. That was suggested by Brian Joyce to me in an email back in before the last town meeting. But I thought the price of eighty-seven thousand dollars for a road that should have been accepted back in nineteen eighty-five by the town, along with all of the other roads, was kind of a high price to pay. It would have been seven thousand dollars per household for the next ten years. And I didn't think I was going to be able to get that by eighty percent approval or a hundred percent approval for the twelve residents. So and I also look at this, it's obviously, you know, we need a new town hall, we need a new junior high, we need a new junior high and senior high. But people drive on their roads every day. If they know that they're on this list like we are, then it's hard to come up and say yes at the town meetings. We have, we voted for all three the last time. We voted for the town hall, we voted for the police and fire, and we voted for the paving fund. But it's still, and that's obviously that's extra taxes that we're willing to pay. But if we never get on this list, then we'll actually tax twice. We have a regular tax rate and then we have a paving fund tax rate that we're not on that good list. So and I have kind of a unique perspective to all of this. When I retired from the state police in oh-eight, I went to work for a company called Bartlett Consolidated. And what we do is we do accident recovery for public property. State, city and town. Cohasset is actually one of my towns. So whenever there's a motor vehicle accident here in town, I'll go, I'll gather up the report, I'll announce that the DVW have them sign off on the work or the water department. So in the past year, we've replaced three hydrants at no cost to the town because it comes out of the insurance. A bunch of concrete white ballads that should be replaced with guide drill and a bunch of street signs. So and I cover from Hingham all the way down to V-Town in the Cape and the Islands. So I see how each town hall runs, how the DVW runs, how their police and fire, and the condition of their streets. So I kind of have a unique perspective as to how we compare with them. And we're in kind of a lot of trouble right now with the, all the work that you, you people have to do and Mr. Senior has to do. But I'm not here to point fingers because this is something that's happened over decades that just wasn't kept up. So I, I was hoping that we could do it, you could do it one street at a time, that might be best if, but if people don't know that they're on this list, then it's hard for them to come forward. What will happen is that once they hear about it, then you'll probably have fifty streets. Like just for example, there's twenty-one residents on Hillside Drive. And when I drove up there the other day, their road is a little bit better than ours, but it's still a long road, a large cul-de-sac at the top. So we're just trying to kind of help out with this and get, get help in addition to, you know, for our street. Just get it done one way or another. If, if you want to accept it as a public way and it takes twenty years to be paved and it takes twenty years to be paved. So that's kind of all I have. If you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Reardon. I, I have a few comments, but any of my other fellow board members? Yes, Jack?
Well, I sympathize with what you're having to deal with. And it's not just you. It keeps bubbling up. It's a lot of unaccepted roads in town. And I think what we need is a compromise, and this is not, can't be solved this evening, but I think the town needs to consider a comprehensive, it's a couple of things. Presumably, your appraised value will reflect the fact that you're not on a paved street. The appraiser should reflect that, so you should be have a lesser value because you don't have the value of being paved. And this is a common problem with everybody. I think this town needs to look at a comprehensive way to how to deal with this. Models would be how we dealt with sewer, when we had to do the sewer. There was a betterment. I'm paying sewer betterment even though I had a perfectly working septic system. But that's a comprehensive and it's not just your street. There's lots, I don't know how many others, because this comes up quite frequently. And I think the town should be looking at setting up a comprehensive inventory of the streets, deciding how to fund it. In some cases, betterment covers all of it. In some cases, it's, it's deemed that the betterment will cover half of that. And that cost is put on to your property tax bill. And it's, and then you get the benefit, the pricing, municipal pricing is ordinarily cheap. And then we have it solved for, for every, every one of our households. And this has come up time and time again, and for some reason, we've never been able to really get some kind of consensus to deal with it. Because it's not just you. There's lots of other people and I thank you for coming up because I think it is time to make sure that the town address not just your home, but the other homes.
Right, and I agree with that. If I could just add one more thing that I left out. As you know, we get chapter ninety money every year. Since the year two thousand, Cohasset has received four point two million dollars in chapter ninety money. Now that can be used for streets equipment. So I'm not exactly sure where that went, but as paving, one million a mile, it's not going to get you much. But the formula the state uses, you may know this, is the many, the miles that you have that are public way that you, you maintain them, the formula will equal how much money you get. So if we have ninety-three roads or X amount of miles of road that we haven't accepted, then we're actually losing out on free money that the state's going to give you every year. I see that in my other towns. They, they may not be paving every year, but they may pave every other year, every three years. So it's money that they get and we do not get and haven't received since whenever they started that, I'm not sure, but if it was the eighties, then we're missing out in the past forty years on free chapter ninety, ninety money. I know it went up in two thousand fifteen, we have all that snow. But it's just money that we're not getting because we just haven't accepted roads over all these years. So that might be something that we could look into if you accept X amount of roads and then you can show to the state, hey, we now have ten more miles of road that we didn't have last year. We need, you know, and the formula obviously get more money each year and it's free money. So that's something that I spoke to a former mascot employee and he says, yeah, that's how much they got, but you can get a lot more if they add more streets on. So.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reardon, for your presentation. I'm sympathetic to the private way discussion. I too live on a private way and it's in deplorable shape. And it's, you know, when I have the rare occasion to work from home and I hear the kindergarten bus go up and hit all the potholes, it's discouraging. It's discouraging that the town of Cohasset isn't a butter on my street and owns a parcel and we're still considered a private way. And I don't know how or when or, or how these roads were determined to be private ways back in the day. My neighborhood's been around since the nineteen fifties and every other street around me is, is a public way and has been paved. And most of my neighborhood has turned over. There's twenty-five houses on the street. And most of the newer, younger families have no clue, have no clue that these are private ways. And they actually came to me and said, well, what do we do? And I'm like, I have to recuse myself, which I would if we ever took a position on this. But they're, they're like, well, we didn't know. We didn't know that these were private ways and that we don't get the paving. So very kindly, a guy doing a driveway on the street around the circle had some excess tar and filled in a couple of potholes. And that, that's how, you know, things, things get done. I do, I agree, we should have a study done of these ninety-three roads, what percentage of the total mileage in Cohasset they represent? And, and how we can begin to transform some of these, you know, that there are roads that are truly private ways and then there are roads that are labeled a private way that aren't private. Like my street's not private. It's a throughway. You know, it's a throughway for kids going to school every day, walking up and down, parents walking up and down. So it, it's not, it, it's not in keeping with the original intent of a private way. There is a policy. You know, the board, select board in twenty, I don't know, sixteen, twenty eighteen, established a private way policy. Cedar Acres did was the first neighborhood to do it. And so the, the cost what we were given was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars at the time divided by twenty homes over the ten years. So it wasn't seven grand a year.
Well, they have more houses.
They have more houses. Right, right.
The figure I was getting, given by Brian Joyce for Bates Lane was eighty-seven thousand dollars. And it would be seven thousand dollars per household.
Over the?
Over the ten-year period.
Over the ten-year period, yeah, okay. I thought you indicated it would be each year.
No, no.
Okay, okay.
Over a ten-year period.
All right.
The issue is that, is that, you know, sometimes people don't want to sign petitions. But if I go to my neighbors and say, you've paid the same tax rate as everybody else, you moved into this neighborhood not knowing that the town never accepted this. If we had moved into Bates Lane in nineteen ninety-seven and they said, hey, we have an HOA, you gotta pay a hundred dollars a month, then we'd have a nice new road and I wouldn't be complaining.
Right.
Or I wouldn't be bringing this up.
Well, can I ask?
That was never accepted.
Reardon, what if the town required that anyone selling a property provide a notice to the new buyer that they're on a private way? I mean, isn't that an MLS?
Yeah, I can kind of say I was going to bring this up to you, but MLS does have
Yeah, I thought you would know.
They do, actually, I just listed a house on my street and I had to, because I know now this whole thing and to your point, Ellen, I told the prospective buyers, by the way, this is a private road and they're like, well, what does that mean? And I said, well, the town does plow it, they take care of it in the winter, we have fire hydrants, they take care of the water lines. But when it comes to paving, you may be assessed to do the paving. We might all have to share the cost. And they're like, that doesn't make sense. But now this is going to have to, well, as Jack said, start impacting real estate because it says in the MLS, check the box, private or public. If you check private, well, who maintains it? You know, there's all these categories and, and we are going to have to stop disclosing that. And the other thing, the consistency of this, as Ellen said, you look and you say, well, what's the rhyme and reason to why some were accepted, some weren't? Fair Oaks is not. Allen Street is not. Surrey Drive is not yet. Old Coach, which is basically its sister street, is public. All these streets in the past couple of years, they've all had multiple, Ledgewood Drive, Brewster Road, multiple homes that have sold between one and two million. Several, several, several. Surrey had last one was two point three million. These people are paying a lot of taxes.
And Cohasset Estates is not.
Pardon?
And Cohasset Estates is a private way.
Yeah, so, but it makes no sense. So I think you need a comprehensive look at all the roads and there are a lot of roads that should be public roads. They, they need to just become public roads and then you chip away at them out of our stabilization fund that we all voted.
I'm the only person who's here in nineteen, two thousand sixteen when this happened. So this all was discussed and, and what, I think it's two things. By the way, we actually tried to mandate that realtors disclose and we were told we can't. The town has no ability to mandate. You can disclose it yourself. We can't make you disclose it. No, I understand that, but we can't. We did it. We wanted to make, we wanted to require that they be disclosed, but we were told the state didn't allow us. I, I don't, I don't want to, I don't want to debate. I'm just telling you what happened in two thousand eighteen. The other reality is that this has come up again and again and again. There was a big study before I got here, maybe in the twenty-tens, about adding all these public ways and town meeting rejected it. So town meeting is the only place that can approve a road. The slight board does not have that authority. It's the town meeting has to do it.
But I thought I had to come through here first.
No, no, yeah, well, I mean, you can, you could put a petition on the warrant, which you can't do for this year, but you could do next year. Or you can ask the slight board to consider doing that. There's a whole roads committee and it might be something the roads committee might, might take up. The, the reason this was done though is because, again, the best I can tell you is that after Prop. Two and a Half, when all the taxes got cut, the government stopped accepting, planning board stopped accepting public ways. It's just been pretty much standard practice for the last forty years. I'm not saying it's a good idea, but I'm just telling you that, and a lot of developers never built the roads to public standards. So a lot of these small ways have never built the public standard. So the town really is, is very problematic. the town really, it is very problematic for the town to accept a road that isn't up to safety standards, because then all of a sudden, the public's then accepting all the liability for it. If it's too narrow, if there's not drainage. Uh, and again, believe me, I'm incredibly sympathetic. When I got here, I had no idea what a private way was. Like, if Long Island is such such a thing, the Schmiden Gate. Um, but it's 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 fairly common here. The the public, and I understand your concern about the private way, uh, situation, Cedar Acres did do it. We were able to get a better price and stretch it over ten years. Uh, they're now in a position, because the road's in good shape, that they could theoretically ask town meeting to accept it, and there wouldn't be an expense for many, many years. I don't know if they're going to do that or not.
So that's not automatic? They have a brand-new road now?
No, no, they stopped it. The town meeting still has to accept. Unless you have a road that's literally three hundred years old. We did have one of those. It turned out it had been, it had been a public way for three hundred years, and we were able to, two hundred years, we were able to accept it. But uh, Bates Lane, I don't think it was going to evolve.
Okay, Chris, um, and I am going to wrap this up soon because we have to
If I could just describe Bates Lane, it it would pass in this.
Oh, hold on, hold on, sir. I want Mr. Topp to have a chance to respond. And then I have a question for Mr. Callahan about signage.
I was going to just tell you the history in Hillside Drive. I've been there since nineteen ninety-three. We got paved once. Since I moved here. Um, and we didn't get a better name, so it's doable without. We pay taxes just like everybody else. I would be opposed to getting a betterment for something that should be a public service.
Thank you, dear Topp, twelve Bates Lane. Um, I've been interested in the public roads, private ways, uh, discussion requests all the time now. Um, prior to two thousand eighteen, this was not an issue. Because public ways and private ways, we treat it the same way as as a potential pavement. In the waning hours of a long town meeting in two thousand eighteen, a vote was taken. There were probably a hundred fifty people there, and the town changed its policy requiring residents of uh, private ways to pay for their own paving. Prior to two thousand eighteen, they're all, they're all treated the same way. And that's what, that's what, that's what changed it. There were, there were um, private ways paved prior to that time, Aron River, uh, for one another's. But to my point, two thousand eighteen's now, things have changed. We just passed another tax to fund paving of roads, the stabilization fund. And what the town is asking me and the many other residents of private ways is to pay taxes to pave everybody's roads in town except for ours. I have an interim solution for you. As this problem is being discussed and 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 whatnot over the next several months or several years, in most, most likely case, I think that the funds collected for the stabilization uh, fund from residents of private ways should be eschewed in a separate account. And those funds should be used to defray the cost of maintenance of private ways. Easily done. The town had a calculator, uh, when, uh, on the website, when uh, the stabilization funds were coming up for a vote, you type your address in, you can find out exactly how much each of the initiatives is going to cost you based upon where you live. A ninth-grade high school student with a little bit of interest in coding could change that and tell you exactly how much of the funds collected for the stabilization fund for private, residents of private roads could be separated and put to a separate account, if it's only fair. By changing the tax, by adding this tax, you put yourselves in an untenable position. You cannot tell the residents of private roads that they have to pay taxes. But to get their roads, then, they have to pay on top of that a betterment. It's patently unfair. It was bad public policy then, and it is now. I said that at town meeting last year. It needs to change. And the answer is not charging residents of private roads a betterment or some other thing like that to pave the, pave the streets. Not while they're paying the same taxes that everybody else's.
Thank you, Mr. Topp. So I think at the end of the day, and we're we're going to move on, Mr. Riordan.
Okay, I I just had one last question.
Um.
What do I do with the petition that uh, the resident signed? Meaning, where do I go from here? How do I get this to
Well, as Mr. Seers said, the appropriate next step, I believe, would be doing a citizen's petition or asking the select board to do a petition, starting likely for the November town meeting. If the select board were so inclined at that point, where I believe the board would begin taking up entertaining ideas, probably in August slash September.
If you want to reach out to Melvis, we can set the time to sit down with the, the public works director myself, and I can give you the process.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
But thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
So I I understand the sentiments. I also understand that the public ways, like Beechwood, are ways that everyone uses. If we only let the people who live on public ways use public ways, then we'd have a issue there for the obvious reason. They're in the main thoroughfares, a lot of them, not all of them in Cohasset, and can't even keep up on the thoroughfare roads, as we know, hence the stabilization fund. Um, you know, we do have roads like Ellen's where it's a cut-through that a ton of people use, but there's a lot of small dead-end roads that almost no one uses except for the people on those, so it's a complicated issue. And and it, an additional complication that I think, um, and Tom, you can correct me if I'm wrong. Once you change your road to a public way, if there's land all of a sudden, that your neighbors have, they have rights to begin subdividing and adding additional homes.
That's not the deciding.
Well
It can be a part of it.
Okay, okay, but they definitely have more flexibility. I think we're, a part of the issue is we're trying to change the zoning, both enforcement and the laws, which have in part led to this problem, in my opinion. Um, and you know, it's, it's not an easy answer, and a part of it's state law. State law has rules about what the town can do with your state, public and private ways, and that's always, always been the case, so. Um, I suppose at this point, where we are is the board, you know, can think about this issue and mull it over, and I think just financially, if we were to add in, I think public ways constitute sixty percent of the roads and private are forty percent, we're looking at probably in another additional tax. Um, on top of the stabilization fund of whatever that stabilization fund tax was, you know, just double it, and that will be the new tax if we're to add in all the private way roads on top. But keep in mind, it's probably going to be twice as expensive because you need to bring the private ways up to a public way standard. Drainage, et cetera, right? Think about all the private ways throughout Cohasset and their varying, um, you know, forms and shapes. And so we, like, I I'm just flagging that this is a significant, significant amount of money. Um, I'm not making a judgment in one way or another, but we know that it's a huge undertaking. Um, which may be appropriate at the end of the day. You know, we pay for schools. Not everyone has kids in schools. Um, that's the nature of government, where we share the burden with each other. All right, does anyone on the board have anything else to add in? Thank you for bringing this up. I know this is an issue. Um, so speaking of money and taxes, we need to move on to some of our next issues. Michelle, I'm looking at you. Terms of you being up next, I'm looking at the agenda right now, Chris.
So, uh, for town hall update?
Yes, please. Sure, I'm going to give you the mic.
So there's been a memo prepared, um, I think it's in your packet, um, regarding all of the procurement challenges that we potentially face with some of the ongoing repairs or renovations to that. Um, so the last meeting, um, it was the board's desire to go forward and get quotes for a new roof. Um, we were going to look at design work for a sprinkler system, and then we were also going to look at pricing out new windows. Um, so we started down that path. Um, as far as the roof, as indicated before, we have to have a design for roof. It's the rule, the commonwealth of Massachusetts. Um, so we solicited three quotes. We have one back at the present time for the design. The design cost for the roof is fifteen thousand dollars. Um, and the estimate for the roof that we received is about two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Why two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars? Well, because they have to be D-CAM certified, so not anybody and everybody can bid on it. Um, any product over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, any, I should say, any building project over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars is required to have a D-CAM certified contract. That limits the pool a little bit, um, and limits the amount of people who can bid on it and oftentimes increases the price.
And how much did you say it was?
Two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars is an estimate that we received.
And what was the petitioner's quote, a hundred and fifty? I just, that's just why I just wanted to do it.
It was much less. Um, so, once we give enough time for the designers to come back and we receive, I would like to proceed to another design proposal so we can compare the two, um, we can then go out to bid and get actual prices. Um, I fear we won't have this in time for the print of the warrant. However, we will have it in time for town meeting. But I say estimate is two hundred and eighty-five thousand.
If I could just check and make sure I'm, I'm processing this correctly, so the roof, to repair the roof would cost one-third of the value of the building, as it's currently assessed?
And windows?
So, so when we talk about windows, um, so the old bid price that we have for windows is over six hundred thousand dollars. Once we start repairing windows, now we get into a whole different procurement bucket, which is designer selection, which is any project, any design project over thirty thousand dollars in a project that exceeds three hundred thousand dollars, you have to go through designer selection process. Um, doesn't necessarily add a lot of cost, just adds um, a lot more time and energy towards the project. Fine. Um, the other thing that happens is you trigger the CMR five twenty-one, which is the ADA compliance of the building. So any, any repairs over thirty percent of the building value triggers ADA compliance. So that's a whole nother study that we have to have done to figure out, you know, what we need to comply with ADA for the building. So while we're trying to do some simple repairs, it's a lot more complicated. So the only thing that we can propose for annual town meeting would be a roof and the design of the sprinkler system. Because those two things can be done without triggering any of these other requirements.
One of the more important things that I was thinking about, not so much the sprinkler system, because the annex has a sprinkler system. All right, that has fire suppression. We're using that for now. And we'll get a six-month moratorium from Mr. Helen as we move on, we're showing progress. Uh, I think more pressing in that building is the HVAC system than fire suppression, since we're not using the old town hall anyways right now. And if something works out, we get a proposal, say, by the nonprofits or something, I don't know. Just looking for ways, basically sealed the building, so we don't know. Uh, if they're going to use the building, well, they might want to put something in it. I think the town is maybe showing good faith in buttoning the building up. Um, again, and I go back to this ad nauseam, since we only lost it by ten votes. Um, so that's my thoughts on that, is, you know, where are we?
So, so the HVAC system?
HVAC system, yes.
So if we want to include that, unfortunately, while these projects are standalone projects and under, you know, thirty B requirement in chapter one forty-nine, that's fine. They can all be considered their own projects. However, for ADA compliance, you can't trigger more than thirty percent of the building over a three-year period. So that means roof, HVAC, design work, you've already triggered it. Now you should bring everything up to compliance.
So we're just looking at the eighteen million dollar rebuild anyways, pretty much.
So it sounds like, Michelle, you're suggesting we start with the roof replacement and the fire suppression design. It looks like Capital is inclined in that direction as well.
They were also capital, if you remember that, they were more inclined on the HVAC, that's why I brought it up, not so much the fire suppression.
But that's going to trigger a whole bunch of requirements, and we don't have the funding.
And and while we can design the sprinkler system, installing the sprinkler system is going to trigger all of these requirements, so.
Does that go the same with HVAC and windows? Those were capital were more, to me, were more prescient.
So when we had the discussion with Capital, we spoke about the roof, and they seemed to think that was, that was a good idea. Um, when we spoke about the design for the um, sprinkler, they thought that was a great idea. We spoke about windows. They preferred to move on to HVAC versus windows. Um, but they don't have this level of detail yet on all the requirements. Um.
So do folks have any thoughts? It sounds like we should proceed with the roof and the fire suppression design while we continue to vet these other options, including funding?
I guess my question would be that we've had some discussion of, um, from some citizens, say, we stretched that out. Is it at all feasible to have that thing stretch out for a long period of time? I mean, if we do the um, roof and the uh, fire suppression, that buys us some time. It also removes a substantial amount of liability, and there'll be substantial energy savings. Is there a way um, that we can do that?
So we can do the roof and we can perform the study for this, not the study, the design for the sprinkler system. Installing the sprinkler system will trigger these requirements. So
Unless you wait three years.
Unless you wait three years, right.
I wouldn't be surprised if it takes three years to just get that done.
So, so, so ta- taking, taking the appro- the approach of a little bit of, at a time, so it's not to trigger, you know, the, the requirements, this could evolve into a fifteen or an eighteen-year project. If you have to only do a little bit and then wait three years, and then you can start up and do something else.
Right, so if that was the intent, to wait three years, I wouldn't design anything now. There's
Yeah, yeah, I'm I'm just saying it.
No, no, I understand exactly what you're saying. It's a design now to wait three years to complete a project. And then we can also look at the building, the building's value. I mean, that's something we can look at. Municipal buildings typically aren't reassessed annually, and this building hasn't been reassessed, reassessed since twenty eleven. So we can reassess the building. Um, it's just, there, there aren't many comps for the building. Um, so it's, it's challenging. But that's something else we can look at.
Well, to answer your question, it was a hundred and twenty-three thousand.
That's was
Yes.
The way I'm hearing it, I mean, so Sunday, if I ever have a grandson, they may see a town hall completed, painted, and looking like a town hall. That's just, that's where I'm what I'm hearing right now.
A lot of pressure on your teenager.
Huh?
A lot of pressure on your teenager.
I didn't say I wanted a grandson yet.
Trust me, you do.
So I, but I'm just saying, by the time, you know, I mean,
Same with Bates Lane?
I fully empathize with you, sir. Um.
So, so, so Paul, I think that, you know, taking this quote, measured approach and doing it over a period of time in a logical, thoughtful way to skirt certain requirements doesn't make any sense. Because you're right, our grandchildren will be walking in to get their marriage certificates and their, you, you know, their beach stickers. Um, so I, I think, I think we just do what the chair said, the roof and the design. And we have to, we have to figure the rest of it out.
Yeah, I would suggest, you know, as we do the roof and the design, start addressing the, you know, the town hall issue again holistically, including whether we keep the services where they are and do the nonprofit solution, or you bite the bullet and you do the bigger package and just put it before the town and see what they think. Um, I, I think those are probably the realistic options, but I, you know, defer to the board on how it feels. I think starting with the roof probably makes sense, because no matter what option you take, you're still going to need a roof regardless.
Absolutely, you have to do the roof. Now, the question is, is the roof for the annex?
Yes.
In total.
Total, you just have to do that.
Total building.
Once, if you lose the roof, you lose the whole building pretty, pretty quickly. Um, there is possibility that the arts groups will be able to raise sufficient money to buy there is possibility that the arts groups will be able to raise sufficient money to buy the old thing from the town, in which case the numbers change, you know, very dramatically. Because they, the, for those at home, a private group like an arts group can do it without a lot of these municipal restrictions, which typically will raise the price by, um, they can generally get it done for a third or a half of what a town could do. So, I mean, we should also be aware that that may or may not come into play.
Yes, yes.
Fully on board with the plan to take out the roof. Uh, discouraged by the way Town Hall has gone. I'm further discouraged by the fact that just doing a roof is costing a third of the value of the building. If it were me, I wouldn't make that investment in my own home, but I understand why we're doing it for Town Hall. I think after we get past annual town meeting, we have to come up with a new approach for how we get the town engaged and we get support for doing something with Town Hall, because looking at these numbers, we have to do something. I don't know what the right answer is. I know the approaches that we've tried up to this point haven't worked. I think part of that is just helping people understand what kind of condition we're in, but to me, the fact that the roof is gonna cost a third of the value of the building is pretty telling about the state of the building. So, all in all, I'm in support of the roof and going ahead with that.
Well, and not to harp on this, but, you know, Paul keeps reminding us all that, I know there's this sense, well, with your own house, you would slowly do a repair as you can afford it. But in your own house, you don't have forty employees and the public coming in and out every day throughout every room. We're just dealing with a different situation, which is really forcing us to be responsible about how we address the situation. Um, so I think starting with the roof probably makes sense and the fire suppression design. Also, is the board in favor moving forward on those two points?
Yes, yes.
Let's put it on the warrant, put it before Capital and advisory.
I will say this, I do support it, but I think we're heading right down piecemeal alley again. So at the end of the day, Town Hall is gonna cost this town right back around that twenty-six million dollars to get done what we're doing. Unless we come up with something concrete and, um, so we've also saw the letter, are we gonna get into moving town services?
What?
Moving to town services up to King Street, I bring that up.
Alright, Michelle's.
Wait, give me an update.
Wait, give an update.
Alright, because I have some questions on that one. But I guess I'm in support of the roof, um, we're, Chris, we're gonna have some, we're back to square one, we're gonna come up with something comprehensive. Because again, I will keep talking back on it, I'll do it again and again. This town seems to forget the human element. You guys are working in that building and that's where I'm bouncing back to the HVAC part as well. Um, and the windows, and I find it amazing, and I'll say it aloud, that the same people who come in and out of there commanding town services on a daily basis are primarily the same people that voted it out. Um, leaving us right back at square one again. So if anyone's out on television, man, they do hope they're hearing it. Um, and that'll be that.
Right, um, Michelle, do you like to provide an update on King Street?
Oh, I just have one more. I just have, that, that's okay. I just have one more comment. Um, I was in a conversation with Chris last week and we were, we were talking about budget and stuff. And I think part of whatever our working group does post-town meeting, we have to look into the future and we have to look at how some municipal services can be delivered and how people want them to be delivered ten, fifteen years down the road. Um, we've migrated some electronically with, with, you know, very little pushback um from the citizenry and are there others? And, and we talked about, you know, well, we have all of the, what are they, Chris, the drawings, the, the, um?
Building files.
The building files, you know, if, if we start a, a measured, programmed, digitizing effort on that, so it's no longer paper. Are, are there things, you know, we want a good, safe place for our people and our citizens now, you know, within the next one to two, three years. But we also have to look at how are we gonna work and how are we going to provide services excluding DPW, police, fire, all of those municipal services, but the administrative, I'll call them, level, um, going forward. And that has to factor into what we do. You know, maybe what we do in a rebuild is more technology, you know, so that there's less walk-in people. I, you know, talking to some younger parents, um, they would prefer to do everything online. They don't have time to go to Town Hall in the hours that it's open. Um, so I, I just think it's an important thing for us to consider. We're, we're looking at Town Hall historically and romantically about how town government has always been on the common and has always run this way. And I think we really have to look in, into a more futuristic way of how to deliver services.
Yeah, I can tell you, as someone who works for the federal government, there's been a huge push towards digitization on a huge amount of levels. Um, you know, even in my own work, I work with matters that routinely have millions of pages of paper and I haven't printed another piece of paper in five years. It's all electronic and online. Um, and you invest heavily in the technology in order to do that. We see that in the schools too with a lot of.
Yep.
Um, investment in tech. Okay, um, Michelle, do you wanna give us a quick update on King Street?
So as we transitioned everyone from the historic Town Hall to the annex, where we're a little tighter space, um, therefore some of the town offices are hoteling up at one thirty-five King Street, which, which is a great test to see, can we hotel, how does room mode work? Look like, um, and we're also going to implement an appointment calendar. Um, because currently we have people walking into Town Hall all day long, um, wanting to meet with people, no appointments. And we're trying to get people to understand that with the increased workload due to all the projects that the town just passed, that it's nice to be able to book an appointment, so you can concentrate and actually have materials prepared in advance when people come in. So Kevin, um, developed this and what it is, if you scan this QR code, it goes to everybody's calendar. We've all booked out time on our calendar to meet with residents. Um, and they can meet with us anytime it's open in our calendar, it will alert us, um. And, and then they come in and they tell us what the topic is. So in advance, we have all the materials that they're looking for versus them coming in. Now we have to go find the files and, you know, it makes the meeting longer and it's, it's just, it's, it's, yeah, it's, it's more efficient. Um, so every department head has a calendar, um, there's some departments that are up at King Street, the planning department is up at King Street. Um, they have an office up there, um, we're hoteling, the town manager's office is hoteling up there some days. Um, HR is up there and if in fact someone wants to book an appointment, they'll know exactly where we are and then they can come in and, and book the appointment.
I'm glad to see we finally got that done. I think that's gonna go over like a lead balloon with some certain people, but I think it's fantastic. I think it's great. I've got a question on King, um, and this may be Chris or Michelle. First off, so we're hoteling up there. What are we doing? Are we doing anything by getting an architect for the police station? Because inevitably it's gonna be a police station. Do we have an architect, an RFP? And I have basically three questions on this. And we're gonna have a group sit together with regular meetings with the police chief, the fire chief and things like that. Um, have there been a single sit-down? I understand phone calls. And those, um, I find that just a bit troubling. I know everyone's busy. But I think they've really gotta be in the loop, I mean, because if I was the police or fire chief, I'd see King Street getting filled up with our staff, severe hotel space and I'm losing my police station and I just don't want the town as well to think that we didn't spend money on a police station. Again, I know you guys need someplace to go. That sounded any jab in any way, manner, form, but I would like to see this committee and meet at least so they knew exactly what was happening. I don't think there's been any of that. And that I'd really like to see. I understand phone calls.
To be, we've been meeting face-to-face with the police department. We, we, in fact, they, they've been, they're in our office all the time. I'm either on the phone with Bill Quigley almost every day, but I, John Dockrath and I usually face-to-face once or twice a week. So there, and the same thing with Michelle. So we're also, we have a, we have actually a committee that's gonna start to meet. It's been such a rush with everything else.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the next big thing is to, to do a, um, now, now that we know where we are with Town Hall, to know the time, we can have, devote more time into this. Um, do you wanna talk about the time, rough time schedule?
So, um, I've been drafting a, an RFP for an OPM. Um, we're hoping to get that out probably the second week, third week of May. Um, there's another big project going on in town. I don't know if anyone's aware, but the library amphitheater, huge project, also requiring a lot of, um, staff time. Um, so we wanna make sure that once we, once we send out this RFP, that we can give it the time it deserves, right? This is an important building. We wanna make sure that we not only choose the right OPM for the job, but the OPM we choose also can move forward with the designer selection to start, um, designing the building. So Chief Quigley is very much aware of the, um, timeline, so is Chief Dockrath. We did ask a resident to be part of this committee, um, to have a resident perspective. Um, and as soon as the OPM's on board, then I think we'll ask the select board to formalize a committee, um, to help us work through the design. But as far as just the OPM portion, I think the staff that we have in place and the one resident, um, will get us through.
Alright, my, my more concern was, again, with the committee and keeping the chief, both chiefs informed and also it's a psychological blow. You look at the building and we're gonna lose our police department, we're gonna lose our fire annex and it's through no one's fault. I just think communication is key. But they're well aware and they have a hand in, you know, what's going on again with an architect or the RFP and they know it's out or in like that. That's all I'm asking.
Michelle, why don't you keep that and give us a rec projects update if you don't mind?
So the rec projects, exciting. Um, so Kevin, if you wanna. Just keep listening, Michelle.
I don't know if anyone's been in Town Hall, but if you go up the central, uh, central staircase, you'll see the kids posters that you saw and, and, and the selected, so it's actually kinda nice. You can see the project kind of put together.
So this is the current state of the Beechwood playground, um, over the course of, I think, the past three to four months, um, in working with the Beechwood parent group. Um, in, in the kids, we've come up with so many designs. The kids posters were great and inspirational to the design of the playground and exactly what they wanted. Um, so.
Is this a video? It's a video.
Oh, do you wanna play it?
Yeah. Progress, please put the finger.
Okay. So, yep, here's the inspirational pictures, um, and as you can see, the climbing apparatus on one of them and you'll see all the different slides. So here is the actual equipment that was chosen. We have a sensory tunnel. We have the, the playground structure, which has the slides. We have the rider. Um, a swing set will have actually four swings and then the manta climber. Um, these were all in almost all of the photos. Um, these are parent-approved, kid-approved, so I think it'll be a success. Um, we did analyze some color themes, um, in the beginning of the week, so we could go into production on this equipment. Um, and the Beechwood parent group now, I think, is looking at the poured-in-place rubber to see what type of colors they want on the ground. Um, aside from these structures that you see here, there will be some picnic tables as well as shade structures, um, so the parents and kids can enjoy lunch at the playground. Um, part of this program is actually working on the basketball courts as well. So CPC funded, um, these basketball courts many years ago. Um, we're always waiting to do a larger project, so these basketball courts are gonna be completely renovated. Um, at the same time as the playground. So Beechwood will have a nice refresh of a new playground and basketball courts. And just recently, um, to kick off the spring baseball season, we had the baseball, um, fields. We had the infield redone, um, we had it hardly rigged by our DPW staff, um. So it's been a great refresh to the area. Baseball kids are thrilled. So Beechwood's really getting that facelift that, that they so desired and deserved, so.
Fantastic.
Um, that's the Beechwood update. As far as Milliken Field, we're moving along with that nicely. The restrooms, we're just waiting for some more materials to come in. They're on back order, but as soon as those end, those restrooms will be open. Um, and the tennis courts moving along nicely. We're going out to bid on that in two weeks. Um, so we'll have firm bid pricing back, um, and it looks as if we'll be able to fit the two pickleball courts at the end, um, assuming that the pricing comes in where we think it's gonna come in. Um, and the sports wall over here at Sawyer Street, hasn't been forgotten. We're working through a little conservation issue, um, so that may lag a little bit. Um.
I'm sorry?
The sports wall.
Okay, you said that, yeah.
So there may be a little lag there, however, it's still, it's gonna get done, um, it just may get done, um, a little after these other projects are completed.
Right, thank you. Um, maybe, Chris, you should keep it to start the ATM warrant review?
Okay.
And we'll just.
So, um, I said, I, I'm sure all of you had a lot of fun looking at it. Advisory continues their review tomorrow night. Almost ready to wrap it up. Um, and I think we've come together okay, uh, obviously we couldn't fund everything that everybody wanted, because we never can. Uh, we're going into the last year of the three here, labor set, set labor contracts, so it's a three percent increase base, uh, which has just pushed us a little bit. Uh, so, uh, we, I, I had to go back and we tweaked for the schools as well as the town, uh, where we could go on revenue. So, uh, we're gonna, I mean, it's gonna go up a little bit more than four percent, which is the first time we've done that in a number of years. But I mean, we kind of have to be there and we can. Uh, the, the new growth number of this, this, this year for next year is really good. Uh, we had really good numbers, and I say that in a lower sense for both, uh, pension costs and our health costs, so. Uh, I was able to fill through, so we do have to keep people paid, uh, and maintain our, uh, maintain, so. Uh, the, the, uh, the couple of other tweaks, uh, we, we wanted, again, this is following on the, the select boards, um, uh, it's budget message, uh, one is to increase the, the reserve fund, so recommending, uh, we put some free cash into that to raise that thirty thousand dollars and maybe just one fall if we need to continue. Um, we, we tried, there's two payments to OPEP, uh, we maintain the OPEP funding policy that's been adopted. Uh, we're gonna recommend actually funding a hundred percent through free cash, they should be gonna reduce that, so use some free cash funds on the, in the spring and the fall. Um, and then, um, the, the, the increase, I think, uh, in capital budgets most excited, uh, recommending a hundred thousand dollars additional go into capital this year. That's a five percent increase from nine to two oh six six, so. Um, that will get them up again and we hopefully, that's coming out of free cash, too, hopefully can, can build that in further as we go. Um, so that's, that actually helps a little bit with the projects this year. Um, otherwise, and again, the rest of our numbers were good, the health numbers good, the pension numbers good. Uh, even our, uh, I'm gonna, I'm hopeful, we're now going through a, a whole analysis of our insurance coverages and we're trying to get every discount we can for next year. So a lot of departments are scrambling on that. Fall best practice, doing it for years. Um, I think we're making a good progress, so, um, you know, that's kind of the high-end overview, uh, and I could talk more about the, um, some of the, uh, on-time cost items too, uh, to do that. So right now, un, unpaid, so that's our before. Anything on the operating budget specifically and generally? I will say that I'm gonna talk about the school budget in just a second, because a chunk of that's coming out of the on-time costs. Uh, but they're operational, we were able to get them okay. Um, they've, they've kind of cut the increase out, but we're able to, I think, bridge that if you happen, we're okay right now. Um, the, the, the biggest single problem with the school budget is they have some significant unexpected of increases in special education costs and just percentage increases. Everyone in the Commonwealth is facing large double deal, uh, uh, like I think twelve to fourteen percent increases in, in costs for some very significant expenses. Um, it's quickly, I've got, I'll throw it to the, there's no unpaid bills right now, which is very exciting. Things were left a little confusing, I was finding it starting things a little differently than I else did, so, but it's part of my own, Michelle, I really thank for all the work she did to try to squeeze through this. I think we're okay. Uh, all the bills are paid, it seems, and we're okay, so there won't be any unpaid bills on the warrant at this point. Uh, we're gonna transfer money to one-four-three TV as we always do, any money from Comcast to Verizon. Uh, and then just two other supplementals, one for legal expenses to put some other seventy-five thousand into this year's budget, uh, just because we've had some additional costs and another hundred thousand into the, and actually, you know, we've had it, uh, it seems like we were always stretching a little bit. Um, we had an unexpected retirement and an unexpected departure. A gentleman left us for another department on the north floor. Um, the good news, we're actually recruiting somebody from Nantucket, he's gonna join us this week. He's a full-fledged police officer, very exciting. In the academy, starts. In the academy, starts with us, I think in the next week or two, so we're, we're, we're making some progress on those fronts. And there is money in the budget for another full-time officer next year, which I think is really important, and it's gonna help cut back on the overtime. Absolutely. Those are the supplemental appropriations. Um, terms of stabilization funds, I mentioned the extra hundred thousand dollars for cap, so we're gonna go back to our, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Um, Chris, one question, um, related to the legal costs. It strikes me in the operating budget, we budgeted an amount for legal costs that maybe is not realistic.
So, we've had kind of jumps, we've had spikes and declines. And I think what's happened, when we first switched bluffers, I think there was a need to kind of refresh some things we did. And I think what's happened is some of that stayed longer than I think we expected. Uh, and at the same time, there's been some unusual cases, a couple of planning work cases that have dragged on, some kind of nowhere, and then we found a couple of other pieces of litigation. Um, that have, uh, one of them is now ended, which is good. Um, it's, I think it's. And, um, some others that have kind of continued, so I, we may have to supplement to that in. I don't, I, I, we are increasing it in the budget a little bit. Not as much as I would like to. Um, I, that's something though, that's a little easier to supplement the fall. I do think we need to have our boards committees being squeezed back a little bit on how much we use council. Um. I mean, remember, we have funding for the zoning stuff. That's separately funded. It's not paying on a regular legal budget. If it's special projects, we can fund separately. Um, I'm hoping, uh, hopefully, I don't know, hopefully planning will have a nice quiet next year. Then when people suing them, that'd be great, so. So, um, I understand that reality, and it, it's something that I think it's easier to supplement as we get into the year than people.
Yeah, 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 I understand the other reality. It's just, um, when you look at year after year, it looks like we're under budgeting.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, we've, well, you could also say we're, we're spending more than we, we plan to, and I think, um. I think we have to take a harder look at where we are. Now, the other thing is that. Next year, we are going into a, the third year of a contractual list, so we're probably gonna have some more expenses for our labor camps. I think we have to take a real hard look at that and then figure out if we need to do some supplemental appropriating maybe in the fall, just to be safe. Again, one of the issues also is, um. Uh, well, one of the issues is what's gonna happen from a state level will affect us. We've seen what happened with teachers in other communities. Um, and, uh, and I think, and one of the other conversations I think we'll have this next year is. We've gotten out of civil service with the police department. I think the fire department is coming, I think the year is coming around to that conversation, so, uh, that may require. A little bit more money. Um, now, one of the other things that, that Michelle and I were going over last week or two is. Some old articles that have been kicking around out there. One of them we're gonna clean out is the Old Town Hall projects, so those will be closed out as we come into this, this town meeting. That's gonna leave a little bit more than a hundred thousand dollars left, which will get help fund some of these other projects we've talked about. I think there's some other articles out there that we may be able to use, um, set aside for contract payments in the last couple of years. We haven't really had to touch it. So we might actually have those in the back pocket for this next year. So I think we, we have a little flexibility going into the fall as well. With money that we may not actually need, uh, for the original purposes, which is good. Um. Uh, on, on the stabilization, we're gonna go back to putting it into the stabilization fund, take it, take it back out. The other was just easy. Now that the vote is only a majority vote, it's not a real issue to put it back in and out. I think it just tracks up even better. And as I said, well, I'm recommending another hundred thousand dollars under the cap. We have it, it's a good idea. Uh, the other is, you know, the contribution of the interest fund, which is, this follows the policy, it's two twenty-nine, six thirty-seven. Twenty-nine, six thirty-seven will come out of the budget, two hundred thousand free cash, and we'll continue to get us back up to the hundred percent money coming out of the budget as we can. Um, in terms of the article, um. Nine and one time costs, um, there's six of them. Uh, I sent you a supplemental. Uh, memo a little earlier tonight, so I apologize. There were two things that were on it. Um, one is very small and one involves the sewer department. Uh, the first is, uh, as I mentioned, project management services is Monday, we've, we've setting aside to supplement the work. Brian right now is our only engineer. And, uh, as we ramp up projects, particularly on the school side, even with roads and sidewalks, we're gonna need some engineering oversight. This allow us to contract with somebody. At this point, we're not planning on hiring somebody, but if that's where we go, we'll end up hiring somebody at this point. Brian's preferences to, to use contracted services. That'll be a lot, that'll be there as money to tap as we need. Um, the school stable, uh, special education is, there's a chunk of money here, three hundred forty-two thousand, three hundred ninety-nine dollars. And that's the exact amount that I've been told they need to put the hole for next year. As I say that, they're actively working with the state for supplemental money. Uh, and we just don't know, we're not gonna know that until May, what they get. Uh, that number may be able to come down, but at least if it's locked in and they don't need it, that's great. It could just, it'll just be pulled back later. Um, and I, it buys a little time to figure out, are, are some of these expenses gonna be permanent, permanent multi-year? Or, and, and are the, the state gonna change its form? Because I, I don't, I don't know, and, and, uh, I think there's a degree, I think, still uncertainty on the schools that. We want to make the hole, or we want, we don't want to cut regular education. I mean, I, I don't, I'm not gonna recommend at this stage that. There's any conversation about layoffs or cutting back programs on any side of the budget. That's a very large number. It's like a whole, maybe it's a small department, maybe like shutting down the library at halftime. Uh, that, that, that said, it's a large amount of money in the school looking to.
Hey, Chris, can you explain why we're not hitting the special ed stabilization fund?
Well, they're gonna ask for that. For next year, it would, it's predicted, for next year, it's. So let me, let me answer it in two parts. One, if it's, if you know it's coming, it's not special, it's not.
Unexpected.
It's not unexpected.
The second is they, they're looking to come to the board this year for a whole edition's budget. So that's gonna be on your agenda in a couple of weeks. Uh, they're gonna be seeking, I think, two hundred thousand dollars this year for the, the cost that hit them this year. Uh, we've been waiting to see if the state was giving them supplemental money this year, so.
Is that out of the reserve fund?
No, it's out of the special ed reserve. Yeah, yeah, so, um, that's gonna bring it down pretty well. I'm gonna have to put more money back into. Yeah, they had a, it's a, part of the challenge is that the, the state is facing this every district, because every district's looking at the same increases because of, of some of these. Higher cost special education. I mentioned the thirty thousand to reserve fund, there was a request to increase, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry to interrupt, but doesn't this need to be an article on the warrant?
It, it's gonna be a, it's gonna cull into an article.
Oh, okay, because we can't just sue a sponsor to do this. Like, it has to be a warrant article.
This is gonna be in our allocation of funds for one time costs, be in an article, and it'll be set aside specifically.
We just don't have it laid out.
The stabilization fund does not, that, that withdrawal only functions, um. At the vote of the select board and the school committee, the special education stabilization fund.
The procedures read as if it requires a town meeting vote, but maybe not.
Is that, is that the sped policy?
To put money in, you need a town meeting vote, to take money out.
Okay.
That's for special, okay, that's for the stabilization fund. I'm not recommending the special ed's money that I just mentioned. This three hundred forty-two, that's, that should be an article at town meeting for next year. As a lot of money for them to tap as they need. And if they don't need it, that's great. It's just, that's the full amount that they could expect, so. That's worst case scenario, I think we need to.
Okay.
And again, if that's pending, we just, yeah, we can put it on something else. The, uh, reserve fund I mentioned, uh, there's a, there's a sewer repair that needs to be done at the Darryl School. An old pipe, uh, broke or bent, and, um. It's put a bathroom, uh, in the back of the building. It's used for faculty service, and it needs to be repaired, but it really needs to be repaired. Of season, so, uh, we tried to do it during the, um. Um, the break, and it just couldn't get scheduled, so.
Question, are we able to hit the restricted ARPA funds for that, or is that all spent for sewer?
Um. Yes, but I think we're gonna spend a.
Are we?
If, if, if we, if we do one more sweep of the existing ARPA money, we still have money left, we can use.
We don't want to lose any of that.
No, 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 the money we have in our hands, we still have.
Okay.
We're, we're gonna be, um. We're still waiting on the settlement on the.
That number.
Right, that, that's been dragging and dragging, so that should be imminent, I think.
Okay.
Um, so we'll be back in front of you very soon. Uh. There's a, there's a sewer asset management grant. This is a SDP grant that other communities have done. You need to put up all two twenty-five, you get back a hundred thirty-five. It, it's a full assessment of all of their inventory, which is great. Um, and they had plenty of money in the retained, so I'll come in and retain dermings, and then a hundred thirty-five will go back in after the study's done. So that's, that's an easy one. The last one's small, and I'm sorry I didn't include this because it, it kind of slipped through. Fifteen hundred dollar fine was paid a year or so ago for tree bylaw violations. And, uh, uh, the, the D P W has asked that money effectively be put into the tree. Bylaw following, tree bank revolving fund. It wouldn't, doesn't automatically go there. We're, we're so recommending it comes out of the, which we're making free cash and stick it to. It makes sense, that way it can be spent on trees. Um. So, uh, that will pretty much, we have about, uh, uh, we're gonna reclaim forty-five thousand dollars we didn't spend from. The fall, because we ended up, uh, moving forward on the project for Beachwood that I'll get approved. So that, that, that's, that, the cost of that will be built into the project, so. Forty-five thousand for the port, for, for those mats, we'll, we'll claw back at annual and. We'll end up with nine hundred eighty-eight thousand of free cash, and spend nine hundred seventy-eight thousand if this all gets. Those are the budget articles. Any question for me on any of those? I want to advisory, they can still be debated, so advisors can ask lots of questions tomorrow night, and I'll come back to all of you. The other ones, uh, just to give you updates on tonight, um, there are the creation of two new revolving funds, um. For library programs, library stuff, how to revolve it, because historically they never charge for programs, but they're trying, charging for a passport bar, and they give you all extra money. And they like to keep it in within the library, uh, but they may end up charging for other programs in the future, so to create a. So, um, well, you can go in there and your passport, uh, at the library, they can process it. They get a little fee for it. Yeah. A lot of people are going in there. It's actually much easier to go in. Um, if you didn't know, now you know. Uh, and then, um.
I have to say, Chris, sorry to interrupt you again. I'm not super jazzed about revolving funds, in part because. I mean, it's fee revenue that's coming in, and I understand there's personnel costs, but there's other costs too, and the, the more revolving funds we create, the less it. Shares the overhead, right? And so I think we just have to be careful about not too many revolving funds everywhere.
Mostly, I.
I'll just leave it there. I don't.
I understand. A lot of these are very small, uh, and, or, or in the case of the other one, like I said, here, it's fee based, so. If you, you, you pay for your gas inspection, it pays for the gas inspector, right? So we've been kind of running it through the budget, and it, it's just simpler to have it.
If it's simpler, then maybe the, you know, it cancels out.
But, uh, you know, your points will take it. The, the reason that recreation runs off, off budget, because that programs pay for themselves. There's nothing of that, that's the only thing they need now to go, because they're just small. Uh, but I, we also, it becomes an accounting mess if you get too many. And this is just the way they set up, man. Then, uh, property next deferral, there's a memo that you have from the assessors. This is gonna allow, uh, for an increased amount of, uh, income for the deferral program. It's gonna go up to six and nine thousand dollars. It's a recommendation. Town meeting has to approve that. Uh, and then Article sixty is coming off, uh, the cellular lease. Um, Carolyn, uh, reread the warrant article we approved in December of twenty-two, and. There was approval for the select board to approve the lease when one is ready. And Michelle has one that's teed up, and you'll hear that in a couple of weeks, so that'll be very exciting. So that we don't have to, so we've lost an article, it's gonna be a large trouble. Um, and now, if there's no questions on that, I can turn this back to you to, to have the zoning.
Is there any questions? Questions, okay. Okay, Tom, I know you've been constantly waiting. Um, now is your moment to shine. Zoning by law.
All right, so where we are is we have. Of the nine articles, number nine is off altogether. Uh, that was to re. Well, originally it was to repeal large home review, and then it was to edit it, and. Uh, town council advised that since it was originally advertised as a repeal. It would have to go forward that way, uh, or we could set up another public hearing between now and June, but we, we're just gonna leave large home as it is.
Okay.
Um, and especially it doesn't matter since Article eight, um, uh. Floor area ratio based on the planning board's action, the recommendation is going to be to refer it back to the planning board for more study.
Okay.
So there'll be, so that, that has to at least go to have the motion to refer it back, so there'll be the other seven, which. Everyone who's looked at the other seven has approved them unanimously so far.
Okay, so the articles.
So where are you putting them?
So the articles in our packet are. The reorganization amendments, the red line consolidation, um, of.
It's four reorganizations, the MBTA, reform of parking, and re, putting in a. Buffer border district in the village in the heart.
So which one they want to send back to a study?
The floor area.
Why?
I don't want to get into it. I don't think it was, well, the, the minority point of view, and this was the minority on the zoning bylaw committee, because we approved it three to one. Is, uh, you know, it hasn't been thought through, it hasn't been studied enough, and I had. The, the people who say we need more study don't even know what they want to study, so, don't, don't get me going on it. I oppose the idea of postponing.
And they want?
It's, well, they're gonna come, you, you know, despite my fact that I've asked you a number of times for money for an expert for this. They're gonna come back and ask you for money for an expert for this. And somehow think things will change between now.
Like to do an impact analysis, is that the article?
And they're planning on coming toward the board?
I don't know, yeah. That's what they said. I'm, you know, I, I'm sorry, I'm not trying, not trying to. Be fair, but the, the planning board's gonna recommend that it be deferred, referred to study. Not gonna fight it anymore. So there'll be seven that'll have to be acted on.
Sorry?
There'll be seven articles to be acted on, so. And the presentations have gone quickly. Probably takes half hour to an hour. You know, to date, we haven't had any opposition on the MBTA communities, but. Who knows, after people start reading the paper, Marshfield rejected it last night. Very short sighted of them, they're gonna get sued, but.
So Milton.
Another expert, uh, was Sophia Milton, Holden out in central Mass, and now Marshfield, and then. Um, I was chatting with, I. Through LinkedIn with Judy Barrett, who's been reporting on this on LinkedIn, articles about how many towns have been passing, and she thinks there might be another town tonight that rejects it. So, you know, that, that, you know, again, we had a forum on that subject in January, and we had, between Zoom and live, we had seven attendees and. Am planning another forum in May sometime, um, probably May thirteenth, thereabouts, um.
Could you just give me a layman's rundown of the F A R, um, what do they want to send to study? And why?
The proposal is to take what we currently have as a twenty percent. Lot coverage for the primary building, the house. In a two-dimensional measurement to replace that with floor area ratio, which is a three-dimensional measurement. Which would lead to proportionality of. Lot size, house size to lot size.
All right, so.
And it won't eliminate large houses, but if you have the lot to support.
Layman's terms, again, proportionality in this.
Small lot, small house.
Small lot, small house.
Large lot, larger.
I'll give you an example. Uh, we had a recent large home review on a property. Of a lot that was just subdivided off, um. Fifty-five thousand square feet, fifty-five thousand plus in residence B, which is thirty-five thousand, so it's not non-conforming. And with a twenty percent lot coverage, which we don't really approach in our pattern of development. Um, you could have an eleven thousand plus footprint. Times two and a half to three floors, you're gonna have a thirty-plus thousand square foot house. What's being proposed was a little over five thousand square feet. All the architects are giving us floor area ratio now, even though we don't ask for it on their plans, and it was a floor area ratio of. Point one zero, and what we're proposing for RB is point one two, so it could actually be slightly larger. It is a five thousand some odd square foot house, maybe closer to six on a fifty-five thousand square foot lot. As opposed to potentially a thirty thousand square foot house. Yet another project, if we just prove that the lot coverage again doesn't approach twenty percent, but it's ten thousand square. House, and under the F A R that was applied to that lot, it would be, as, my calculation was roughly, it'd be sixty-eight to seven thousand square feet instead of ten thousand. Still big. It's, it's, it's designed to. To make house size harmonize with the neighborhood. And they, there's opposition to the way I calculated it, even though it's based on historical average. House sizes in the town and each in our districts. And. That it's, there's not enough examples of how it would work, and even though, you know. That it's, there's not enough examples of how it would work. And even though, you know, for existing, and actually. Because of town council's help in rewriting the bylaw, uh, you know, existing nonconforming houses will actually have more rights than people under new construction. So. Um, because they will go through a special product or permit process under. Under the nonconforming by law and state law. Whereas. A new construction would have to meet the FAR. We, we still had the little cushion for a special permit, but otherwise.
So Tom, we got a email from one of your colleagues, um, about.
One that I wasn't copied on, sure.
Uh, about, um, his home and if. With respect to his home, he would be limited to a certain square footage. But from what you just said, it's an existing, potentially nonconforming. Sub to the special permit process, his home would be inapplicable because.
Well, uh, we, we used a lot of people's example houses as examples, um. For one of your houses, one of your five was used. Two weeks ago when we discussed it and you currently have an FAR of point three two, which would exceed. The FAR, but because it's preexisting nonconforming, it would go through a special permit process to expand. Which is a lot better than a variance process. Um, my house was told last night that I'm at point. One one, and I would. Either the, uh. Requirement in my neighborhood would be point one two and that I was being told by the opponent of this that. I wouldn't be able to expand, but my lot is nonconforming. So I'd still be able to go through. The Article eight process, so.
So most of us could expand.
Through the special permit.
Through the special permit process, which is, you know, substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. And I think that whole standard by itself is trying to harmonize a house and an expansion. Into the surrounding neighborhood. That's, that whole standard is based on. But, you know, again, I, I, I don't wanna go to the floor town meeting fighting my own board. If that's their recommendation, that's their recommendation. Not, you know. Again, you can choose to do something else, but I, I don't think we should be in a position of fighting with the planning board.
I just have, I have a question, Tom. So the, um. I understand the proportionality, you know, and going from two dimensional to three dimensional, but doesn't our. Uh, restriction on height? That. Put in, a, address that? Why?
No, because thirty five feet is two and a half to three stories. So that new property, had it gone to the full twenty percent lot coverage that it was allowed under our bylaw.
Yeah.
It would be an eleven thousand some odd square foot footprint multiplied by two and a half or three. And it is a two and a half or three story house that's being proposed. Except it's only five thousand some odd square.
So. That's really.
The, the current, the current bylaws all based on two dimensional measurement. Just a footprint.
Right, right. And.
That's what the trend is to get away from.
Right. And, and, and the height restriction makes it three dimensional.
No, but the height restriction is still going to let a footprint go up two and a half or three stories.
Right. No, I understand. So which, which gets to your proportionality.
No, it doesn't because the footprint is so large.
But the footprint, so the footprint would stay the same.
So we, we, again, except on the very smallest nonconforming lots in each of the districts, we don't generally approach twenty percent. Nobody's building to that yet.
Yeah.
But we are also seeing a trend that I argued about that on the planning board, that every dimensional limit. We have, especially height, is being pushed to the limit by new development. So the numbers that were proposed for the FAR were based on our average house size in each district. Which is the numerator. The denominator is the. The, um, minimum lot size requirement in each district. Which was the last, the last time we did comprehensive changes to dimensions, those lot limits were put in. Eighteen thirty five and sixty thousand square feet. That was done in nineteen eighty six. We have already over two thirds of our properties are about two thirds are nonconforming. Largely because of that area change in nineteen eighty six. It didn't seem to upset people now then, but it, this seems to be. Driving a few people crazy. And yet it's a very simple mathematical equation. One of the members said, you know, how would in order to figure it out, will you just figure out your. Current house size over your lot size? That'll tell you which are FARs. And if you're preexisting nonconforming, you will be able to go to the zoning board through a, a special permit process rather than facing. A variance. The variance and the. Where the limit is going to have its hardest impact is going to be on new construction.
So do you mind if I ask? I mean, I wasn't at the meeting. I'm sorry. I missed it.
Nobody was at the meeting.
Well, again, I'm sorry.
I, I, you know, we discussed this with the zoning board and nobody showed up.
So, all right. Do you mind if I ask now, since I missed the meeting?
Sure.
That, what is the, what is the pushback? From the board? What, what are they saying about this? FAR that's.
Well, the pushback of two of the members is that. The one member who was opposed it with numbers and figures and comparisons to Brookline, which. Um. There's, there's very few communities that have yet to adopt FAR. We would probably be the first or one of the first smaller communities. And so numbers for Brookline and Newton were thrown out, but Brookline and Newton are far denser than we are. They're pretty much urban. No, and, and. It was, it was represented that our twenty percent lot coverage would, would yield an FAR of point four. You know, we're proposing point oh nine, point one two. And the one that's pretty high, that's closest to twenty percent is Residence A, which is our smallest lot sizes. And our average house size to. Lot size in Residence A is seventeen percent, so point one seven. I personally think that's a little high, but that's what the averages. So we're just taking, this is data that the predecessor by law working group developed in twenty twenty one. So it's data through twenty twenty one. But these are the average house sizes. And so basically the FAR is memorializing those averages. And taking away the threat that somebody could do a twenty percent footprint and then multiply that. By two and a half or three floors. That's one that, take away that threat and then. By measuring this three dimensionally, you're. Better harmonizing. House size to lot size and neighborhood character. Just thinking about it. But the pushback is it's apparently not studied up. Apparently the town's actual data was not good enough and that I haven't presented enough and don't have experts helped on. Um, and town council, by the way, was very helpful at the end. They. Edited it down to a much simpler form than it was originally written. We didn't bring in new definitions and new terminology. Um, and they very well, Carolyn gave a very thorough opinion on. How it interacts with the nonconforming by law.
So Tom, let me ask you, of all of the bylaws that went through, I'm presuming these have been reviewed by KP? Is that right? At this point? Okay. So everything's reviewed?
And the state, uh.
And they're at advisory?
The, the AG's office gave us a pre-screening on the MBTA community.
And that came out positive, right? Yeah. So right now the posture is that. Let, let me ask, of the ones that were recommended, was anything changed from what the select board had placed on the warrant? In terms of those recommended articles? I know the off street parking, I think the apartments, the one point spaces per unit. Per bedroom, right? That changed?
It changed to. It changed to one point five per unit. Which is the measurement we're also employing in the. MBTA. Yes, yes. All the other boards pushed back on the select board on that one. So it, it's, it was one bedroom per unit. You, I mean, I'm sorry, one space per unit.
Per bedroom.
Is the existing.
Yeah.
You wanted one space per bedroom. And now it's proposed and written for one and a half.
Back to the one and a half deal again?
Yeah. And that's going to increase the demands on, again, I, I, I'll argue this again till I'm blue in the face. It is not residential development that is driving the parking problem in the village. Because every per, project we have permitted since I've been on the board has had onsite, completely onsite residential parking. It is other uses, the hospitality uses in the town that are driving that problem, not the residential. So. However. All these properties are small. And. By increasing it to one and a half per unit, you're going to put pressure on development. And if. For the few properties that are left in the village, if, if your intent is to slow down development of the village, this is going to have that impact.
We're at a one and a half now, right?
Yes. And by the way, the gas station project was one and a half. There were twelve residential units and they proposed eighteen onsite spaces. They had eighteen onsite spaces for that.
So. I'm just saying.
So that was one and a half.
We recommended two, right?
No, you recommended one per bedroom.
Bedroom. So why are we down to one and a half? So you have a current vice.
Consensus of the planning board, the zoning board of appeals and the zoning by law committee is to do this. We're not hot to trot on killing village development. I'm not saying you are, but you.
Right.
The word slow down was said.
I don't think anyone here said we want to slow down village development. I, I think the intent from the select board, we should say, from my seat was. We need more parking.
And I'm, and my answer again is that it is not the residential aspects of village development that is causing the problem.
I would disagree with you because I. Think we've been permitting residential development. We have fewer spaces than those residential developments actually use.
That's because it was one per unit. Now it's gonna be one point five per year. And it's going to. For example, one, one pleasant street had its adequate, it's assigned spaces and the, the proper number of. Residential spaces and the proper number of office spaces. I think it had more residential than it needed. Cause in the one per unit, it would have only needed fourteen. I believe there's more.
Right.
But if you make it more now, a small part, now, again, what's left? What's left? Let's, let's use Smith Place as example. It's gonna put pressure on how Smith Place gets developed, if it gets developed. By having a bigger onsite parking requirement, which is what this is.
Has a smaller building to accommodate them.
Small building to accommodate. It's not.
Probably, probably.
And so. So if, for instance, a two bedroom, I hope I'm, I'm parroting off you. I'm sorry.
No, I. If it is not.
A two bedroom apartment will have one point five, but it could.
All right.
Air it up in an overall development, there may be another.
Where does the other car go?
There may be another de- develop, uh, apartment in the development that has only one bedroom and that's going to have more spaces allocated. So there'll be three spaces allocated between those three bedrooms. So.
Well, and, and it's not to change the subject, but, um, the language still remains, or unless a reduced number is authorized by the special permit granting authority. On a finding, blah, blah, blah. You know, this is one of the few places where.
One of the few places where we have the power to grant a waiver. And again.
And I wonder why.
It was written that way. I, I can't recall the why it was written fifteen years ago, twenty years ago, when we were all working on this, but. It's a power that the planning board. Wanted to, us, wanted to keep for flexibility. And it's a power that the zoning board encouraged us to keep for flexibility.
So that gives the planning board quite a few since granting.
Yeah, but we haven't exercised that waiver. Once that I'm aware.
I just want. To address the issue of parking. So requiring. Anything that's built to have sufficient parking for its realistic. Number of cars, I think is a good place to start. And I don't think we're there today.
I would agree. I think one of the. You're looking about livability and developing of an area. It seems to be very foolhardedly to allow. More people to move in, then you have space for their cars. Cause all that's gonna happen is that extra car isn't gonna go away. It's just gonna take away. Parking space that somebody has already had.
That hasn't happened though yet. So let's talk about reality. As I said, the, the gas station project already went to one and a half per. Unit when it didn't have to.
So.
One Pleasant Street, I believe, is got more spaces than the minimum required for its residential component.
But, but you're on the current requirement, which I'm saying is too small. So saying it complies with the current requirement doesn't address.
It would now comply, they would both comply. They would both qualify for this.
People on James Lane, which is a permitted project. Park outside of the James Lane development. So I don't accept the argument that. The current status quo was sufficient. I also don't accept the argument that. It's a requirement of the planning board to maximize the value of residential or commercial developments.
I would, I would disagree with you, but that's, you know what? I, I, I.
What am I?
It's not going to change at this point unless you wanna make it in a floor town meeting and make a case.
I'm tempted to.
Well, the reality, Tom, is that.
Reality is, uh, let me point this out. I don't wanna point this out because I, you guys have been very supportive, but. It has been pointed out in some of these meetings that three of you live abutting in the village. So just be aware of that perception. Okay? I'm just, that's, it's a political heads up.
And people have accused me of owning one Pleasant Street. So I, I'm not motivated by people's fantasies.
I'm just pointing it out.
It's the members of the boards, the planning board in particular.
No, three members of this board.
More than, more than just the planning.
I, what I would suggest for this board going forward is that we get a parking study of village parking because I think it's long overdue. I think, Tom, a part of the disconnect is that. The planning board sees one perspective, the select board, the zoning and permitting board see one perspective. The select board sees a different perspective. We see, for example, the police chief coming to us saying. We need more enforcement in village parking because we've got James Lane parking in there. We're putting up, like. We're trying to do the enforcement, trying to address. The citizen demands with respect to that parking lot. And so to your point, the question is, well, what's driving this? What's the cause? How do we address it? Is it overflow from the residents who are living in that area? Is it? The vitality of the businesses which we enjoy, um, the restaurants, et cetera? Is it some combination thereof? And I think maybe once we get some real data on that point, and I know you've wanted a parking study, which I think is a good idea.
I, I, yeah, but you, I think you're targeting the wrong, again, you're targeting the wrong. Cause of this, the cause of the uses of, when all the hospitality places are going. On a Saturday night, there's a wedding, Split Rock is open, the other restaurants are all going. That's the problem.
If, if I could counter that very quickly, so. Tonight, after this meeting, go see how many cars are in that lot. Businesses are closed and there are still cars in that lot. So that tells me that that's residents.
Of all the village developments? Again, the ones we permitted have had adequate parking.
Point to hospitality. If there are still cars there when the hospitality businesses are closed.
And start ticketing in them and find out where they come from.
Well.
Because otherwise, how are you gonna find out where they're coming from? Cause it could be anyone who lives around there who's parking cars over there. All I'm telling you is that we are permitting projects with adequate residential parking onsite.
And that's the fundamental point that we disagree.
So again, I would recommend that.
We're also not, by the way, the, one Pleasant Street isn't even occupied yet and the gas station isn't even gonna get built. So. Even the projects we've permitted are not generating cars.
You just said, cause they're not built or they're empty. Of course, they're not generating cars.
Right. So that's not the source of the cars that are parking overnight in the lot. That's my.
So, so your argument is that by adding even. New construction and new cars, that's gonna make it go down?
No, I'm, but because then all the permitting is to do it onsite. Yes, we have been strict about that. And the residential projects we have permitted are onsite with more spaces than the minimum they were required to provide.
And that's a good thing.
That is a good thing. It's, it's not the answer. It's not the source of what is, is parking overnight.
Madam Chair, I would suggest we're not making any more progress on this.
I know. I agree.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that this probably requires more study, including the harbor parking too. I would add that into the mix. Cause this is, this is gonna trigger s- um, similar discussions, I think. Once those buildings start to get populated on, um.
And we sure wouldn't want, I guess, political malfeasance.
And by the way, in the harbor, the harbor, same restriction and so is three A, but as practical matter, the harbor. Is not going to see any more residential. Development in the district, the harbor district that we're creating because we're leaving it all commercial, we're cutting off the ability for mixed use. So the only mixed use project that is down there and will be down there is the one that's already permitted.
I'm going politics, Tom. I'm saying three, four members living.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I pointed it out. Okay.
I just don't want any thoughts of political malfeasance. We start looking at parking, God forbid.
Well, listen, listen, a parking study can be more just from, than from a zoning. It can also be enforcement. It can be meters. It can be how you park. So. I think there's a variety of things that.
Going to require building more space.
Yeah, it's, it's probably. Yeah, it's, it's probably going to require a lot of stuff that goes beyond, you know.
All right, so I, I only thought we were here to discuss where they're going to be placed on the warrant, but.
Well, yeah, I mean, I think that the, the parking use is probably the only point of discussion for the select board, given that we recommended one thing and another thing came out. So I just wanted to make sure people had a chance to know that and to discuss it, because you know, the planning board and zoning board sees one set of facts. We see another. We see the enforcement aspect and the citizens group. The citizens who complain to us about parking. Um, all right, so the question is, I think we've already put these warrant, articles on the warrant, no?
We weren't sure how many that were.
Oh, okay.
Now you have seven, for sure.
We have seven, and the eighth one will just have to be a quick motion that the planning board wants to defer it for step.
Well.
So you have eight.
That's, this, the, the.
Eight, eight will be on the warrant.
The select board could, I'm not, the select board could put the FAR on if you wanted to. You'd have that time, just have a forefight, that's all. I mean, it's, it's the select board's warrant. The planning board's had its hearing. The fact that it rejected it doesn't mean that it can't go on the warrant. All they have to do is have a hearing. They don't have to vote it yes.
Yeah, they just, the planning board just makes a recommendation, that's all.
And it doesn't mean it has to go on the warrant.
No, no, no.
It has to go on the warrant to either, to be either deferred for study or voted on.
Right.
My understanding from councils is that the select board can choose not to put any of them on, right?
Well.
If, if they choose, if it chooses.
Right, that's what council told us last night. So. But looking at it from our perspective, not your perspective.
So what is it that we can't do?
We can go forward with Z, we can go forward with ZBC eight if we choose to. The planning board will recommend, rather than recommending approval or not approval, the planning board will recommend deferring it for further study to the planning board. They won't do indefinite postponement because that'll trigger the two-year rule that we couldn't bring it back. A defeat will trigger the two-year rule. Passage will be passage.
So before us is one and a half or two, is that correct? What is before us?
That's, now you're getting back to the parking.
Yeah, I'm asking, Jean.
Well, right now, I think the next procedural step is to decide if we want to place all of the zoning articles that are in our packet on the warrant in their current form. I think, and I was just trying to make sure, just for transparency, that we knew what changes, if any, had been made since we referred these to the planning board. It sounds like it's only the off-street parking. I don't think there's any other changes, right, Tom? I don't think there was any.
Well, on, on, on FAR, you didn't.
Apart from FAR.
You didn't like the idea of having a wiggle room for a special permit, but the wiggle room for a special permit is still.
Okay, so setting aside FAR, does the board, let's. Do we want to recommend all of these warrant articles to go on the warrant, notwithstanding our concerns about the off-street parking? We can start here and go from there.
I think if, I think if Article eight is not going to be recommended, I don't know why we would put it on the warrant.
I'm not suggesting to. I'm just saying the seven that were.
Oh, the seven that were, okay, no, because Tom said it should go on. And then just on the floor, say it be deferred to.
Carolyn says it doesn't have to go on. Fine, last night she led us to believe it.
Okay.
With the recommendation that it be deferred for study on next town meeting.
So I think we're trying to get to which procedurally, it's like one and a half, or one, or two?
You're, you're going back to the parking article. The parking article is written for one and a half per unit in the village harbor and three A. To the extent the latter two have any residential units, but for the village, it's one and a half per. With, with a planning board waiver. Current is one, one per unit with planning board waiver.
So.
All right, so.
I mean, I, I want one and a half, if not two. It's my feel.
It is one and a half.
Yeah.
And if, if you defer this or it gets defeated, you're stuck with one per unit. So I would suggest going with the one and a half. There isn't much property left to be developed in the village and see where that leads us. And, you know, again, the, the permit that is still in force for the gas station is already at one and a half per unit. And if that permit expires and a new developer comes along, there's no reason, again, if the bylaw changes, then they'd have to go back to one and a half per unit, which squeezes the size of that potential building quite a bit, so. As far as, you know, whatever else is left available in the village, the one major piece of property that could be developed that's not built on is probably landlocked at this point, right?
The planning is still offer a variance of they give a waiver, I'm sorry.
It would have to be a fairly unique situation, and I would suggest that the unique situation would come about if there was teardowns on Main Street, because those properties are tiny.
But fast forward to five, ten years from now, and it's a completely different planning board. You're applying judgment based on your position as the chair of the planning board. The next chair of the planning board might not see it that way. And that's what we're worried about.
That change may be coming pretty soon, so.
But, but what, what? So, so the interesting thing to me that Tom said is, you know, it goes on the warrant at one and a half. It's currently one. If it goes on at one and a half and it fails, it goes back to one.
Correct.
There's no opportunity on town meeting floor, other than to make an amendment to the warrant article to change it to two on, on the floor of town meeting and argue that case. And if that fails, it still goes back to one.
If you defer it for study, it will be one until at least fall town.
And if.
Well, if, if the amendment fails, it goes back to one and a half.
If the, yeah, if the amendment isn't adopted
Right.
and the original article stands and is approved, it goes to one and a half.
But if the article itself is defeated, or the article is deferred for further study, it will be one. It will be what we have currently had.
So my recommendation, even though I completely understand and don't like where it lands, for all the reasons we know, um, is to still move forward and recommend this, and in the interim, do a parking study to try to arm with more facts and information, because I just think we do have a disconnect between the boards, and I think we need more of the sort of data and facts that we see, including from the police and from citizens, and you know, the businesses that come to us with all these concerns.
That still doesn't address the issue of the waiver.
The waiver.
I know, I know.
All right, so I'm leaving that. I'm not, I'm not happy with that.
We've never exercised.
What?
We've never exercised.
You haven't?
No, 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 no planning board that I'm aware of, since the bylaw changed in two thousand and seven, has exercised it.
All right, so why would, why would they be interested if we pulled it then?
Well, and the reality is, as soon as they do, if there's any, any a butter that cares about this, that these guys are going to get sued, which we should care about as a town from a liability standpoint, because as written, for them to do a finding of what to employ this waiver, they're really going to have to have, like, everything locked down. But it provides, you know, just in, introduces a level of chaos, I think, a little bit on that one.
The waiver is, I can see it, again, there are very tiny properties in the village. Most of those tiny properties that haven't been redeveloped are the ones on Main Street itself, on both sides of the street. So there's flexibility to deal with those properties when those come. If they come. And those properties probably right now don't have enough parking for their own residential uses that they have. The ones over Bia, yes, they have a gravel lot in the back. On the other side of the street, there's a few spaces up the hill there.
On the sidewalk next to the church.
I think what we're struggling with is, we acknowledge that Cohasset over the years has not done a good job on zoning. We've got, you know, roads that weren't properly built. We're trying to correct the problems of the past. I appreciate, Tom, that we are dealing with some unique properties that, you know, you very reasonably are looking at and trying to think about, you know, what happens. I think we're looking at people who continue to push the envelope in ways that make the rest of us suffer later on in the future, because that seems to be the theme of zoning in Cohasset. And the, you know, some of the decisions from the past that we all have to live with now, so.
The thing about FAR is people try and preserve the past instead of moving forward in future. People will do what they do, what they want. Remember, the village bylaw was done because the village was dying, and it was done for a reason, to encourage mixed use, to give value to properties that weren't being properly maintained. And it has taken a while. It took a while for any building development to take off. And for the first probably ten years of the bylaw, there was very little. James Lane is probably the first.
For that, for that, so. Three D. We're not in agreement. We're not in agreement.
All right, well, I'm, well, you know, the village is a vital place today, much more so than it was twenty years. Sure, I can assure you of that.
Well, I think we know that, but I'm still trying to figure out how we move forward on this. Because I think that we, as a board, we really do want to restrict new, new parking beyond the capacity to handle.
Well, why don't we do this? For every one of the zoning bylaw committee articles in our packet that was recommended by the select board, with the exception of the off-street parking, can we at least, someone move to recommend those to be placed on the warrant, so we can get that moving? All right.
So moved.
Well, well, shouldn't we, like, articulate exactly which ones? Because we were at seven and then we were at eight.
ZBC one through six.
ZBC?
Or seven?
So.
I mean, I'm tired. Five minutes, five minutes ago, you said put them all in down. You just, two minutes ago, said keep seven out for the moment.
One through seven, with the exception of ZBC six, which is the off-street parking and loading regulations that were, we've been discussing a lot.
So FAR goes on, even though it's not recommended?
FAR is eight.
FAR is not, and sorry, Ellen, it's not in the packet, because it wasn't recommended.
Okay.
So we're looking at the reorganization amendments, the consolidation of district, rezoning of harbor, the village district, um, the implementation of the MBTA, and the creation of the border zone. Is there a motion to place these on the warrant?
So moved.
Is there a second? Any questions? All those in favor, please vote aye.
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 All right, let's grab up with ZBC six, make a decision about the off-street parking issue. It strikes me, the planning board and zoning board are recommending what we see now, the one point five per unit. If we're going to recommend something more substantial, we can do so and move that forward to advisory, but I do think that the, you know, difference is going to be noted, and there's going to be a risk that at town meeting, you know, it can just sort of potentially devolve in a way that might be negative. But it might be worth that discussion.
We, we shouldn't be at odds on this stuff. We really shouldn't.
So what do people want to do? Do we want to do incremental movements? Start off with the one point five, and then we go at it again in the fall? Or you go at it again in the fall to?
So if you're going to do it, if you do that, I would suggest you get your study too, before you change it any further.
Can we defer the whole issue till the fall?
No, don't defer.
So I'm.
I just.
You're not going to solve the problem?
I know, we could, but I don't think we should.
Okay, that's fine.
That will, that will leave one per unit in place, and I don't think you want that.
I, I understand. I was just trying to ask my fellow board members what they thought. I think that there's a, giving it to one point five, I think that's a pretty powerful argument. I can see that going to two, which I personally would, um, in, be in favor of. Um, because the reality is, there are going to be people in a two-bedroom, we're going to have kids coming over there, an extra car, and um, I've seen this play out, you know, I've had to deal with this type of parking issue um, years ago in Boston. People will do amazing things for it. Um, so I think part of the question is, a, a higher certainty at one point five, is that worth doing that as opposed to taking more risk for going for two?
Chris, Paul, what do you think?
I'm comfortable with the move from one to one point five. What I'm still struggling with is the language that gives the planning board the authority to ignore the standard.
Yeah.
So it makes me wonder if the move from one to one point five is really a move? If someone says, hey, my project isn't economically viable at one point five spaces, therefore.
The, the reality is, having been on both sides of this, that's BS.
Oh, I agree, yeah, it's.
They're going to say that, and.
My, my fear is when the planning board doesn't have the stalwart leadership of our friend, Tom. Which I'm worried may be sooner.
Does it owe you money or something?
But look at, look at the criteria that is in the, this comes from the, this is in the bylaw today. Look at the criteria for granting the waiver. Pretty restricting.
But I've seen planning boards, and I've seen planning boards on that.
I've seen zoning boards in other towns that give away variances like candy.
All right. I've seen planning, I've seen planning boards that basically.
Can't plan for that.
Walk, but you're interrupting. So I see planning boards that basically walk people through a construction project, all right? One iteration in, it's not too long ago. So there, that's, that's kind of a danger.
I know, I know that, but you can't plan for that.
No, but that's exactly what we're trying to do, is to.
Is to plan.
Plan for that, so that regardless of who's sitting on the planning board, when a standard is set at town meeting, that that's actually going to be the standard.
Well. At, at this point legally, because the planning board has had its public hearing, I think all you can do is make an amendment on the town floor. And if we get up there, the planning board will, will convene a meeting, a town meeting, and we can take another vote on a recommendation. And we can support it or not support it, but, you know, right now, we can't. I don't believe, you know, we're closed with our public hearing and our recommendation. I don't know.
Well, yours is a recommendation. We make the decision. I think that's the law.
You make the decision whether it gets on the warrant. You don't change the text.
We decide what the text says, though, on the warrant. You guys can.
I don't want to say this, counsel, but I, I think you're correct. I mean, it's like, what, so it's like not to go forward with an article. I think you probably can change it. You want to have Carol give you a rip.
I like the one and a half.
If, if you change the text, we're going to have to have a public hearing before you. That's essentially what we were told about.
You're getting the one and a half. So the planning board's getting the one and a half.
And the bylaw committee and the zoning board have to.
Yes, scratch the other part.
Carolyn needs to let us know.
Oh, Sarah.
So I do think that.
I won't touch it till.
As someone who sat on a planning board in Cohasset way before Tom was on this planning board, I can understand what you're saying. At the same time, I think that we're more likely to get the incremental change if we recommend it and then do the parking study. And, you know, maybe bring up, see on town floor to say, you know, one of our big concerns is that this is a waiver. It can be an exception that swallows the whole. Particularly depending on the composition of the planning board, which, you know, traditionally is not, not a contested seat as we see in today's election about to happen on Saturday. And that's, you know, we appreciate people who've stepped up, but, you know, this is just the reality of a small town.
So why don't we just pull it?
If you pull it, then you lose the one point five, and it's stuck.
Use the one and a half. I didn't say pull the whole, take out that, take.
Well, then we need to figure out from Carolyn.
Power to change them.
What?
I, I was on this board before you were on this board. And I don't think you have the power to change the language at this stage without the planning board having another public hearing.
But we're going to try.
So I have another public hearing?
If we can do it, I'm. If we can do it, I'm.
That's where you mentioned yourself, talk to Carolyn about it. And so going with the one and a half.
I hear you. I hear you. I hear you.
Down the road, but, you know, if, again, we all know select boards change, planning boards change. We all change. And as of late, there hasn't been a lot of people stepping in to run for any one of the boards. Which is kind of sad. But you get, you get a loaded deck, you get a loaded deck. Next thing, oh yeah, pass that, pass that. And you said it yourself, you've seen variances pass like candy. In different times.
You know, the communities. And I've also seen communities like ours who apply the law correctly and are, are hard on people looking for variance.
Again, under your stalwart leadership, I'll praise Chris.
Give credit to some of our neighbors too.
I do.
So if we choose to put this on the warrant, that's putting it on the warrant as is, correct?
Yes, unless we learn, I think what we can do was, we can recommend it as is for now. But if people really want, we can, you know, come back next week and see what Carolyn says about our ability to make a change.
I'm comfortable with that, especially because it puts us in a position to get the one and a half. And then we can deal with the second issue when we have more information from council.
Yeah, then at least we can move it forward to advisory. And, and Chris, I think when it moves forward to advisory, I don't know if it's Rob, who's on the zoning articles. But maybe just flag for him this discussion back and forths.
He's watching.
Okay, so that way, Rob, so now you know, like, you know, we're, we're sort of going back and forth about this. And we're not happy about it, but we're trying to figure it out. So we're.
You know, I mean, I understand your gatekeeper authority and having sat in your seat. It's also, I think, a potentially troublesome precedent if you start gatekeeping other boards' recommendations of bringing things forward.
Well, I think.
Let, let, let them go to the meeting and let them be voted on. And if we can change the text before June 30, change the talks. I wouldn't shut this out completely.
I think the reality is that we're to take, talk to people who are impacted. They would definitely be in favor of not, of, of limiting the parking. Our, our risk, of course, is if it ends up at the end of the meeting and partisans who have financial interests start demagoguing, which has happened before, we've seen that happen. But if you were, and what's driving me anyway is that I know that public sentiment is in favor of not have, of restricting the amount of parking to the ability of the development to house their own parking. That's what people all believe. Could somebody maneuver to evade the will of the people? Yes, they can. But I think we as a select board, that's who we represent.
I would be very interested, though, if you found out. Police department can probably find this out without ticketing anybody, but find out who's parking. Simple thing.
Well, I find it a troubling precedent that boards are inferring that people that live in that village are trying to influence politics.
I'm just telling you that there were a couple of people who said that and you should be aware of it, okay? I probably shouldn't have said it here.
They'd said it here, so don't worry about it.
It's been said here.
Perception sometimes becomes reality. I don't buy into it either, so don't worry about it.
So, okay, so it sounds like.
But I think, my point is that if you're going to make the argument that the residential parking in village development is causing the problem, I'd first find out who's parking there overnight now because there isn't any recently permitted residential development that's got any parking at the moment because they don't have any residents. James Lane may be another thing. Now, if James Lane was not, James Lane would have been subject to the one per, one per unit rule. And maybe James Lane, a lot of things got, was, were done wrong when James Lane got built.
Differently planning board.
And maybe that project, I don't, was kept to the only developed one per unit per what the bylaw allowed. And that would be a problem, obviously.
But they built them 40 feet high.
A lot of things were done wrong back then. The FAR was allegedly miscalculated, so I don't want to go back and. There's nothing we can do with it.
Okay, so. So I'd like to move forward because we do have one more substantive article to address. So with respect to the off-street parking article, entertain a motion to put the article on the warrant as is subject to this discussion and getting more information from Chris as to if we wanted to amend it next week, what that process would be. But to keep the process moving, including with advisory.
So what are the words going on?
Yes.
At, at what number?
We haven't decided numbers yet. Is there a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, let's do roll call vote. Jack.
Point of clarification. Are we putting it on?
1.5 unit with the waiver. So what the planning board recommended to keep this article moving forward, but we've asked Chris to reach out to Carolyn to see, can we amend the warrant language if we chose to next Tuesday?
To 1.5?
It, it's, it's on right now for 1.5.
I just wanted to double check. We've gone back and forth so many times.
The only amendment would be regarding the waiver.
All right, I, I, I vote aye.
Aye, okay.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Would we have the opportunity to potentially put this on the warrant at our next meeting? If the vote comes in, no, tonight?
Sure.
Thank you.
Would we, now you have some questions? Would we have? Actually.
I mean, I want the board to feel comfortable with it. I'm also mindful of the time and, you know, trying to.
I'd like to get a.
The planning board can't do a public hearing in a week.
I'd like to get a response from Carol.
Okay, you want a response from Carolyn? Chris, would you like a response from Carolyn too?
I would like a response from Carolyn.
Okay, okay. Ellen, how are you feeling?
I'll withdraw my second.
Okay, well, wait for Carolyn. Okay, Rob, you know the issues, if you're watching.
No, it's.
Okay.
You've done a phenomenal job.
I'm done. What are you going to do with our eight?
It sounds like, Tom, your recommendation is for us not to put it on the warrant. Is that?
Personally, I'd like to fight it on town meeting floor. I'm not going to get into a position as chair of the planning board fighting my own.
Fair enough.
So.
It's not going to change. The fall will be the same and it'll just be somebody else promoting it. I can assure you of that.
Okay, so I heard two different things. What is, what would?
What I want personally is different than what I want as chair of the planning board. Okay? Planning board is recommending to defer it to further study. I have to respect that. I was on the losing end of that vote. I, I have to respect that. And I don't want to get into, you know, as much as other members of my board think it's okay to get up there and speak in opposition to your board's votes, I'm not going to put myself in that position as the chair.
Because you said you wanted to fight it out on the floor.
Personally. Personally, I do.
So what are you saying?
Defer it. Do what they want.
Don't want us to put it up?
I'm not, I don't have the fight in me anymore.
What are the, what are the other boards saying? To the extent.
Obviously, you recommended it. The ZDA didn't take a vote on it because we, they were waiting for the planning board's vote. I will tell you that none of them showed up last night to voice any opinions, but at my meeting with them, they voiced support for the concept. They support the concept of, of doing it. They then, you know, subsequent to that meeting, the judge edited it to deal with the issue of the non-conforming lots. And at least one of the members by email seemed to be going back on his statement, so, you know, I don't know where they are. And this is one of my frustrations, but they support, you know, I, I represented to the planning board last night, they generally, they supported the concept of switching to FAR.
What was the vote? Was it two to three? Or four to one? FAR.
On which board?
Planning.
It's three to one. Three to one to defer it for further study.
Who didn't show up?
It might have been three to two, but I was on the losing end of that one to defer.
Okay.
There's, there's one vote on the planning board that opposes it no matter what it says. Study or not, this can be a vote.
Okay. Well, how does the board feel? Do you want to defer? Do you want to move forward? What do you want to do?
Defer.
Defer.
Jack.
I think that's the way zoning waiver futures, much better, but I think we need to stand together and defer it as a, as a.
I'd like to see you fight it up.
I don't have it in me after last night. I promise to God, don't.
Okay.
Can I back up the numbers? Yeah. It's, is, they, like, do I, like I said, does the majority of my board know what they want to study? No, they don't. There's a suggestion a grad student did it last night. I almost pulled my hair. So I, I don't know what's going to happen between now and the summer. I've asked for funding for an expert a long time ago. I know it's not there, so. Whatever.
Well.
Again, I don't want to be in the position of being the chair of the board, fighting my own board. Member who's not a chair wants to fight the board, had this been a three to one vote in favor of the article, knock himself out, but I'm not going to put myself in that position.
I would suggest a. I would suggest.
Just ask Carolyn if we have to take it off the board or do we have to make the motion on the floor?
The select board just has to put it on.
It sounds like a majority wants to defer, so I think we should.
Yeah, particularly if you go late at night. You know, based on our discussions, there will be confusion, there'll be fear. Late at night will not be the time to deal with it.
Yeah.
Although I'm in favor of it, I do think that something is fundamental that unless we have really strong conforming opinion, we just ought to defer. Battle could be fought another day.
Well, I guess, you, you, you won't, you'll never have one planning board.
We have another, I, I'd like to move that the chairman never be allowed to vacate the chairmanship on penalty of losing his home.
Better start talking, you better start talking me out of it soon. I'm not kidding.
Chris, will you want a decision? Okay.
Sounds like we're deferring. I'm comfortable.
All right, so where? At 11 o'clock at night?
We haven't decided yet. We, you know what, we actually don't, Tom, we don't have a lot as we look at the entire warrant. A lot of this is I, I just think it's, it's going to fly. I think, you know, town hall maybe will take up a little bit of time, but, you know, it's a roof.
I think if we do another public forum in May, I mean, the January one was right after the holidays and I don't think anybody was focusing, but the forum would cover all seven that are going forward and you know, then we can gauge if the, you know, whatever's going on in neighboring communities is stirring people up about the MBTA community's thing. I'm not anticipating in other towns, it's passed without debate.
Yeah.
Abington, a couple of weeks ago, zero debate.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you, Tom, for staying so late.
I apologize. I'm tired.
No, no, thank you. So we do have a warrant article, Chris, that I was reading. This is the Cohasset Noise Control Bylaw. So there were just a few things that I wanted to highlight. When we get to the exemptions and the permits, I thought we had discussed this, but maybe not. So everyone, I'm looking at the warrant. This is on page 16 of 22. It looks like the exemptions allow any activity which is the subject of a decision of any town board having authority over activity, including without limitation licenses issued by the select board. And then we get to any enforcement official for good cause shown and with appropriate conditions to reasonably minimize any adverse impact. It says the any, I think you meant any adverse impact on the public may grant a permit allowing activity that would otherwise violate this bylaw. I have to say, I don't like either of those. I know we talked about liquor licenses, so I think we should in entertainment licenses, I think we should call those out, but I don't want the planning board and our building inspector issuing permits that are contrary to the noise bylaw because they're, you know, for whatever reason. I just, I just want to.
So is that B? It's 177B?
170 dash 7A. A. Six. So, so for six, I would recommend changing it to any activity which is the subject of licenses issued by the Cohasset Select Board. And any enforcement of it, and I would just take out B entirely.
Well, that's, I'm actually. Carolyn made a bunch of changes.
Okay. Because I thought this, this is the old version where we went through this.
Yeah, yeah, so it, it, I think it only says, any activity subject to a decision of any town board, you can take that out. So any activity subject to a license issued by a class like that, that'd be entire language. It's, that, the.
Full stop, yeah.
That's, that's what it says now.
And we take out B? The permits after you get through A and all the.
Well, the, the, the only, I mean, the only thing, you have to, again, I, I don't know this so cold yet. I guess it's covered by five. It, it, let's say there's an emergency and there's a, you have to shore up a building that's going to collapse. There was a fire or something, a flood. That's going to violate the noise bylaw, but you have to do it for an emergency. I, I.
I think that's five.
The five.
Yeah, I just don't want building permits to be issued that, you know, for whatever reason, allow construction outside of the hours that we laboriously went through at the last select board meeting. I don't want to reopen.
I think, yeah, that's the only other thing I think you, you need to have safety on is just. I think five is all the noises around safety stuff. And I, I have to, let me go back to Carolyn, make sure that it's. Now, you could take that out. We just circle back and make sure we're not causing trouble. There's also 783, any vehicle in the performance of emergency work. So if we're talking about a crane or a construction vehicle, they're engaged in emergency work, I think they're covered. That's the only other thing I can, that's the only reason I can think of basically being off hours.
Yeah.
It's some kind of an emergency.
Yeah, I think if we have to tweak one of the emergency language provisions.
I'll follow back on.
Okay, okay. Just because the genesis of this was those working under a building permanently.
I think everything else was addressed. I think we took care of the extra hours for homeowners from moving on and stuff.
All right, I don't think there's anything else under the warrant articles. Is that right? We can hopefully quickly go to the town manager update and then.
So you got next week you're going to start building. So the only one that quickly update you on is follow-up on the safe harbor, so. Cole and I met with a number of other folks to line up all of them. Budget all of that, so the, the quick update is there, there were, there are three buckets, right? There's the supply budget bucket, that's the safety kits and stuff. Those are, those, all the materials have been ordered. Once they come in, they're going to be put in the kits, so that's all in progress, which is great. There's the advocacy piece, the paranoid one, it's already in place, so that's already good. Recovery coach, you just have to get that person onboarded and the person will be onboarded as well. And then the, the contract for the recovered souls, which is those, those little brands. That's been reviewed by council. Everything's all set up to go. We have the funding in place, so. Some stuff is already going and then there'll be a, I think I sent all of you in the draft. It's not quite ready to be released. They have a few more updates, but it's a two-page. It's like everything you need to know and all the people you need to get. All those phone numbers, so that, that'll be released shortly. And it'll be like a one-stop access. The only thing they had to update is, is how to contact for those scholarships for that in play for the families and all. And when it gets kits, because they have. And where to get the kits, because they have a certain, where the kits are going to be. Because they haven't been put together, because they're still, so, that's, that's in progress, so it's all, it's all moving.
Thank you.
That's it.
Chris, why don't you hang on to that mic, if you got a comment? Oh, no, you, Chris, you, Chris.
Oh, I'm done.
You can pass if you want.
Just one brief comment, I've noticed a lot of families moving into my neighborhood, want to remind you, Cohasset is still a great place to move into, and we still do have people wanting to live here in spite of all the challenges.
I just wanted to remind folks about Earth Day, which is also a great way for those who are new to Cohasset to get involved and meet other fellow Cohasset residents. It's being run this year out of the rec center on Saturday, so again, just a quick plug for Earth Day and volunteering. Okay, so we are at.
I have to say, you know, we've. I see a lot of frustration, Tom. But I don't think we get ten percent along the way to doing our zoning changes without itself.
Oh, yeah.
It does deserve a pat on the back, I don't think you can. I just wanted to say that even though he's.
Yes, completely agree, Tom is a very dedicated public servant, and we appreciate everything he's done for the town. Approval of minutes. March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, April ninth, twenty twenty-four, thirty comments, questions? Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'll make that one.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.
Alright, we have no topics, not reasonably anticipated.
Before you, Jim, can we just confirm the date of the May meeting, just, we're looking at May sixth, I think we're all set, go forward, it's a Monday, so we're all set.
Okay.
Because we're going to change the date on this, Trace is already, so we have no, I think everyone confirmed.
And Chris, can you remind me, what's the last day to finalize the, May sixth is the last day to finalize the warrant? Okay, alright, there we go. Okay.
It's going to be May seventh, that was May sixth.
Alright. Motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Second, all those in favor, please vote aye.
Aye.